Is crazy, so don't know if that's a good idea.
That week of Christmas, Christmas and New Year, they trick every place everywhere you go.
And that's it?
Yep.
You're right.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you're right.
I'm gonna walk right behind you.
Yeah, so. I mean, we went with a trip out there to Arizona. Didn't.
Okay, okay, I would like to start this. Meeting of the new year with one of our pastors, Pastor Matt from Christ South. We would love for you to come up and open us in prayer. For this first meeting.
Absolutely, it's always my honor to get to be with you guys and just to sort of check in with everybody. This has been a wild, wild week. And I think in particular a week that it's great to be able to be centered around scripture and prayer. So let us pray. God of reconciliation, God of redemption, God of peace. We come to you, Lord, with heavy hearts, scattered minds. Called to serve our town, our state, our country. As citizens, Lord. As council members, as mayor, as staff, Lord, we come to you and we ask for your guidance. Help us to be wise, make good decisions for our town. Help us to be strong, that we would stand together. And that even as situations around us try to divide us, Lord, unite us. Give us wisdom, Lord, that only you can give. But most of all, Lord, give us peace, peace which passes all understanding. In your name we pray, and all of God's children say.
Amen.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you guys.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm gonna try without this and see how the mask does. Okay, I will open our meeting, January 11th, 2021. And if we can stand, stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have a quorum with all members present. Changes to the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Stuff as one item, a new 12F, it's a resolution opposing one first subdivision rezoning request that's going on in Indian Trail.
I'm sorry, okay, my agenda here is messed up. So that's, I had it. A, B, C, D. And that is a resolution, sorry.
Opposing one first.
Oh, thank you.
Subdivision rezoning request.
Okay. Okay. All right, very good. If we do not have any more changes, I will look for a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
All in favor? Very good. Okay, if you guys don't mind, just for a second, I'm going to take my mask off. To go over some of the mayor and council reports. Am I okay? All right, I will start out. I have two things that I would like to share. First, on January 2nd, I received a letter from Smokey Bissell, owner of Roots Farm. Stating that as a result of the planning board meeting on December 21st, he was withdrawing his application for the conditional zoning. I was listening to the meeting, I must say, I was embarrassed of the behavior by the chairman. The planning board is a volunteer group of residents, appointed by the town council. They are an advisory board only, and we look to them for recommendations. We strive to fill the board with professionals and courteous volunteers who will represent the town in a manner that is just that, professional and courteous. After attending the virtual meeting, I feel that I need to apologize to the planning board members, our town staff, the Roots Farm team, and Mr. Bissell. In my opinion, the chairman overstepped his appointed authority by not allowing the members to have an open discussion on the topics that he brought forward. On several occasions, while fellow board members were trying to present concerns, the chairman promptly hushed them. These board members were not acting out of order, only trying to speak and offer their thoughts. While it is well within the scope as chairman to preside over the meetings, the expectation is that it is done in a courteous manner that allows all members to participate in the discussions. I would like to apologize to our town planner, Lisa Thompson, who works hard to represent herself in this town with the highest of integrity. The chairman challenged our planner on the sequential order of the text amendment and the rezoning process, undermining her professional knowledge openly during the meeting. He was dismissive of her knowledge, insinuating that he did not like the timeline, therefore it should be revisited. Lisa is an invaluable employee, and we appreciate her professionalism in the face that she puts forth representing this town. And lastly, I would like to offer my apology to the Roots Farm team and to the Bissells. Every applicant that presents an idea to this town should be afforded the same courtesy and respect regardless to one's opinion. It was clear that the chairman had an opposing view of the project. It is certainly well with his obligation as a board member to share that view. It is not, however, acceptable to present that view in a way that is disrespectful, degrading, and undermines the intent of the applicant. The goal of the meeting was to listen to comments, questions from the collective planning board members. That feedback would be a starting point to revisit the initial plan presented. After speaking with staff, no one, including the applicant, had any clear picture of what the planning board was looking for. I am embarrassed at the representation of this town that was put forth at the last planning board meeting, and I apologize to all those that witnessed. The second thing I would like to share is about a very nice card that I received last week from a resident. He was commending the town on our very thoughtful employee, Kim Woods. Inadvertently, an important piece of mail that he was expecting was delivered at town hall. Kim promptly contacted him and stayed late to allow him to drive up and collect it. We often say how fortunate we are to have such a wonderful town staff, and I am thrilled that I can share that others feel the same. So thank you, Kim, for your hard work and dedication to this town and our residents. And to the rest of our town staff, of course. Okay. I will go around. Janice, do you have anything?
I agree with the mayor, it was very disheartening to hear the planning board meeting. And I too want to apologize to the applicant. I think that everyone should get to present their view of what should happen with their property, and we should all respect their views. And it's disappointing that the town was represented in such a negative light. So I do apologize to the Roots people, and specifically to Randy Peterson, who worked hard to make sure that the town knew what was going on. And to the Bissells, because I think they really love their farm, and they want to share it. And whether it would have passed the town or not, that's not what we would know at this point. But they deserved our respect. And I do want to make sure that Lisa knows, and everyone that was here that night, we value everybody that contributes to this town, and we don't tolerate someone treating you in such a disrespectful way. That's it.
Thank you. Smith, anything?
No.
I'll just second everything that they just said, there's no reason to repeat it. But I do apologize on my behalf as well, to the Roots people, to Mr. Bissell, and especially to our town staff. I appreciate you guys being here and all that you guys do. Thank you for that.
Okay.
I will echo the same thing. I did listen to most of the meeting, the recording of it. And it was disappointing to hear the way that the meeting was being conducted. That was not the way we should treat anybody that is presenting anything before this town, whether it's the board or council or anything else. With that said, I do have a couple of the quick things I do need to add for everybody. I did receive an email from Trish Dahlman, that was the lady I was working with on that Safe Team Driving class that we had scheduled for last March, COVID cancel. Unfortunately, due to COVID, they have suspended that program for the time being. So they are, anybody that made a deposit is getting their money back. It will be refunded, and she said as soon as this COVID mess is done and they get it up and running, she'd be glad, you know, for us to get back together and try to get that rescheduled. But she said, right now, because they can't even project out when they would start it again, they've simply suspended it, and she said she's refunding any monies that were put forward. Secondly, just a quick update from the Western Union Municipal Alliance. Last meeting we had, it was successfully stated that every town council of all our members had passed this resolution that we want to present for the county commissioners regarding EBJ without change, no changes to the wording. And so now that that hurdle has been passed, at our next meeting this month, which by the way will be here on Thursday, the 28th, starting at four o'clock. It will be open to the public, but we'll be social distancing as we are here. We will be looking at when myself and Amanda Fuller, the vice chair, will be formally presenting that to the county commissioners. As of date, every, we've had all county commissioners attend at least one meeting. I'm very happy to say that, they are taking an interest in what we're doing. We've extended an invitation to both Commissioner Ray and Commissioner Rushing, those last two that haven't been here yet for one. But I am waiting, hopefully waiting to hear back from them, see if one of them will be able to attend. And that's all I got.
Okay. Very good. We are now to our public comments. Do we have votes signed up? Did people sign up, or if you want to, okay, Nancy Anderson, you can. That's fine, I don't know if. If you, if you want to, if you want to. That's okay, yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay, first I'd like to thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, council, for allowing me to speak tonight. Before I get started, first, I need to acknowledge my biases. I grew up within walking distance, on a dairy farm, within walking distance of this building. In fact, I used to walk past the building, this building, on the way home from school, which used to be right up there. I love farms. I love digging in the dirt. I love watching all the plants grow, especially when the harvest time comes around. And we get the strawberries. I love bottle feeding the baby cats. I love snuggling up with the newborn goats. And I love watching children catch their very first fish, stalk through the creek on the way back to home. And when they intensely examine this, what looks like an ordinary rock to us, but apparently there's something very special about it. It's their rock, and they're gonna take it home with them. And I love sharing my farm. So when I first learned about Roots Farm proposal to develop their farm to an agri-hood, my initial reaction was very positive. I have toured a couple of agri-hoods, one in Arizona in particular. And I think they're great. But I especially like the 125 forested acres, seven miles of trails that they were going to build and maintain, and open to the public. So you had me at hello, if you wanted, you should read it out. From the very beginning, one of Weddington's main objectives has been to preserve our rural small-town atmosphere. It's from when we incorporated in 1983, every planning document, every ordinance since then speaks to that. And most recently, Weddington rebranded itself as rural, as rural reimagined. Sadly, we have become a sprawling suburb, Charlotte. And to my knowledge, Roots Farm is the only proposal that has ever come before this town that was interested in growing anything besides asphalt and rooftops. Finally, it looked like we had something that would fulfill the vision. And be something very unique. Where the details that need to be worked are of course, just like every proposal that comes before this town, there are details that have to be worked through. And that's the planner's job, the planning board, and the town councils. And we have a process to do just that. And let me be clear about this. State statute requires that we have a process, and that we follow that process. And if we don't follow our own procedure, deviate from that process, we're opening ourselves up for grounds for reversal of our decisions, which is something we absolutely don't want to do. So what happened next is what astounded me. It was a virtual micro-march on the town hall, not unlike the one we just witnessed at the Capitol, L.R. Nations Capitol. The misinformation that circulated around this proposal on social media was one thing. And actually, it's pretty typical when anything is new for change. A new proposal, anything. But what shocked me was the downright hateful hostile accusations that came out of that. Most disappointing to me were several of my former colleagues who used to sit at this desk at this table. And are well acquainted with the process, they know how it works. Seemed to do nothing to correct the misinformation, and in fact cultivated some of that dissent. I was very disappointed with that. I attended the planning board meeting, and like all of you, was absolutely embarrassed by the shameful behavior of our chair. It was his job to ask the hard questions, as it is yours. But the manner in which he did that was shameful. We expect respect and decorum as we go through this process. In my mind, he owes the staff, the members of the planning board, and the Roots Farm team an apology. And I hope that the council will soon find a more suitable representative of our town.
Ms. Anderson, if you could begin to wrap up, please. You're at your three minutes, thank, thank you.
Okay. I forgot, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So as for majority, excuse me, as for minority, but very loud minority, citizens of our town, I found their behavior to be even worse. It resembles something akin to a mob group. And I feel very disrespectful to the planning board. And to the town council, they didn't trust you to go through the process. And instead, they effectively shut down the proposal before most of the citizens that really were informed about it. So in conclusion, it's hard for me to describe how very disappointed I am about this. What a missed opportunity. And so to create something so special and so unique, you talk about a branding for Weddington. So I urge you to take action to try to remedy the situation, reach out to the team, and hopefully bring back the project, or something similar to that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
It's been so long since we got.
No, it's fine, it's fine. Okay, Mr. Hogan.
Hello, Hogan.
Mayor, I was going to defer to this administration.
In case you were going to kick me off.
Okay, okay, okay.
Does she have more comments then?
Of course you don't have one.
Okay, Jen Conway.
It's okay, I wanted to breathe with it and see. Mayor Callas, town council, thank you for letting me speak. As a resident and planning board member, I am deeply disturbed by the action of a handful of Weddington residents concerning the application for the Roots Farm project. I am also extremely disappointed with the actions from current and former council members that have perpetuated a continuous flow of inaccurate information about this project. I unfortunately made the mistake of interacting on a social media platform of which I should have known was not going to be receptive to any rational rebuttals. I am saddened that we have come to the point where having an opposing position is no longer respected, debated, or even calmly discussed. This town was incorporated with a legislative governing body where rules and procedures are to be followed. An applicant submitting a project of any kind in Weddington should be allowed the opportunity to have their submission flow through the established procedures equally and fairly, regardless of one's personal opinions or views. Elected and appointed members are the speaking body responsible to do the job of following the rules and procedures put in place. How an angry resident opposition to this particular project fueled by misinformation prevented the procedural process to run its course in itself is appalling. As we all know by now, the application for the Roots Farm project has been rescinded. I believe this is in part due to the despicable display at our last planning board meeting. The disrespect to the applicant by our chair, clearly having a personal opposing view, was in my opinion completely out of line. He does not speak for or represent the entire board. And his monopolizing of the meeting and improper line of questioning was, in my opinion, just sharp, sharp. I am sorry that I did not have the courage to interject and express these thoughts at the time. Any applicant that comes in front of the planning board should be treated with professionalism and respect, regardless of one's personal opinions or views. This did not happen. I'd like to personally apologize to Mr. Bissell and all of the Roots Farm team for how they were treated at last December's meeting. This is not how any appointed or elected member of Weddington should ever conduct themselves. You know, I got involved with the town of Weddington because I wanted to be a part of something special. Weddington is a gem, we all know that. But understand that that is only possible when elected officials have the courage to do what is in the best interest for all residents, not just an angry mob, but a handful. Our town is growing rapidly, that fact is not within question. However, it cannot legally be stopped. Will Weddington be forever defined as a land of subdivisions with roofs and blacktops? I really hope not. One who does not have creative ideas, forward-thinking visions, and a plan for the future are often the ones that are left behind. I pray that Weddington is never left behind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have one more on here, Jim Vivian, and.
He gets something in his mail.
You're gonna, okay.
I want to address this to the citizens of Weddington. The past few weeks, with the announcement of the proposed Roots Farm development, the collective voice of the town of Weddington has not been at its best moment, far from it, an embarrassment at the least. A lot of loud voices with misinformation and loose labels on many items with the concept. There's, excuse me, there's some tremendous benefit if people would follow proper avenues for expressing themselves and their opinions. The planning commission meeting on December 21st was almost a waste of everyone's time. We owe it to the town of Weddington to do this correctly. Going forward, I support those who will welcome the challenge of seeing how something like this can work. Of course, there will be differences of opinion, but that is why we have the land use plan. It's there for a reason, and it serves a purpose. About time we paid attention to the process. I've heard for over 10 years as a planning board member, how Weddington residents wanted to park, walking trails, find dining, et cetera. And now, when a very successful group brings forward a concept that could help in achieving many of the goals, they are called names and treated with the poorest professional manners imaginable. Think about it.
Okay. All right, do we have any more public comment? Okay, we will move on to our public safety report. I saw, I believe I saw Deputy Hunt.
I've got the deputy crops.
Okay, okay.
He is under the weather.
Okay, so are you gonna, are you gonna read it?
I'll read it.
Okay, all right.
Said during the last month, we were informed that some mail was stolen from some mailboxes in a neighborhood in Weddington. The information was provided by a concerned citizen from a neighborhood Facebook page. We are asking that all residents report this type of activity to the Union County Sheriff's Office. The sheriff's deputies are continuing to monitor the traffic issue on 12 Mile Creek between 1:45 and 2:15 to prevent collisions. And they continue to increase preventive patrol to neighborhoods and making, and they are continuing to make community contacts. All suspicious vehicles or subjects should be reported to the Union County Sheriff's Office by dialing 911.
Very good, thank you. All right, our consent agenda, Lisa.
This is one item, it is a reduction of the Weddington acre subdivision bond from 2.128 million down to 477,545.78.
Okay. If there are no questions, I will look for a motion to approve that consent agenda is presented.
So moved.
All in favor? All right. Approval of the minutes, changes to the December 14th, 2020 town council meeting minutes. If there are none, I will look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our special town council meeting minutes, December 17th.
There's only one line, so there's not a whole lot to change. If there are no changes, I will look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor? All righty.
That's just one I've ever taken.
I know, that was quick. Public hearing, we have a public hearing for the text amendment to section 4679, connection to public water lines fire hydrant placement. I will open the public hearing and look for Karen for any public speakers. All right. Seeing as we have none, I will close the public hearing and open the floor for questions and comments from council. Very straightforward.
And I think the next logical sentence.
All right.
I just, real quick, I did have, have a question for Lisa, and she did verify with the captain, she about, verifying a little bit more about, instead of just saying all subdivisions or all, if you could actually add in, Lisa, I think if you want to.
Yep, so we had that all major and minor developments would have to be required to do, to add the fire hydrant. I think Anne's concern was what about the, you know, one lot, the two lots, the one lot going to two lots? We don't want to make them have to install a fire hydrant. So the language we came up with, and I passed out tonight, is that where water is accessible for A above, all major and minor developments which result in more than three lots in which a road or shared access is being installed, are required to place a fire hydrant on the same side of the road as the development, and the hydrant shall be not less than five meters deep from the principal structure within the proposed development. That's like more of a development when you're having to build a road and have.
I agree. That, that language was from chief, that's where his concern was, is when we have the new road going in, and we have a new access going in there, that they need to hydrant. But we just, I wanted to kind of clarify just for those like one offs, where we may have somebody who's just subdividing their property, but not really.
I agree.
Having that same requirement there.
Okay, very good.
So we'll ask for approval as amended at tonight's meeting.
Okay. All right. So other than that, if there are no changes, then I will look for a motion to approve the text amendment, section 4679, connection to public water lines as amended by Councilwoman Pruitt. So moved. All in favor? All right, very good. Now old business moving on to new business, the discussion of solid waste and recycling services. Lisa.
Thank you. The town discussed solid waste collection and recycling services, like the retreat, and again is passed as ever. The idea has been discussed with previous councils as well. In the past, it brought up many advantages of contracting these services, including significant cost savings of possibly 50% to what residents are paying now, reduced impacts on roads, safer with fewer trucks and carts on the streets for fewer days. I also believe the town can provide better quality and continuity of service, including localized service. localized service where strict penalties or fines for spills or littering can be issued. Per state statute, the town published a notice of tonight's meeting as our first official discussion of these services. We have six months from tonight's meeting to take formal action on whether to move forward with contracting these services. If the town does choose to go into contract, we're required to wait 15 months from the date of the first publication. So we're looking at April of 2022, we'll probably, if it goes forward, line it up with the new fiscal year, so we're more than July 1 of 2022. Given the timeline, we do need to go ahead and prepare a request for proposal. So staff had outlined some factors and alternatives in your report. First is the type of services. Of course, we'll have the solid waste and recycling, but there are extra services to consider, like a backdoor service for the elderly, gets that service, faulty pickup, yard debris, and then, of course, the frequency of those services. I know Weddington has larger families, homes, so we may need an option for residents to pay for more than one time a week or every other week recycling. I did talk with our attorney Karen Walter, and she said other towns have the rate for, you know, once a week, solid waste, every other week recycling, and then they pay the company for extra services. So if they want every week recycling, it would go through the company, so we could keep the same.
Or if they need a backdoor service or some, okay.
Generally, the company, most companies will offer backdoor services part of the overall contract, so people would have to present a letter from a doctor sent that they were in a.
Okay. They're in a.
That they were unable to drag their cart to the front of the roadway, and some of the companies have a, they'll say up to 10%, they just do that as part of their agreement with the town. So that's, I've seen that most of the contracts that I drafted include that for service.
Okay.
Apparently, the size and color of the car, it's a big deal.
Who would have thought?
We'll have to have a discussion on that, whether to buy or lease. I'm aware that we typically have a 10-year life cycle unless you live on.
Unless you live on Cox Road, they have about a six-month life cycle.
Can I add something to that? Can we actually, the lease purchase or will they be provided by the company themselves?
Yes.
Because there are some that do, so there's three options there, I think.
Right, yep.
Lease purchase or free, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because I've never had to pay for a cart before, so, right.
They're amortized after five years, so the thought is we wouldn't own them and then would be easier after five years to go to another service if needed, but this should be a service provided. I don't know where we would store them, being a small town.
That sounds like a can of worms. I can see that.
For the types of trucks, we want to make sure it's a big enough fleet for various conditions. We have private road, we have gravel roads, there's, I think, two subdivisions with a dam, so we want to make sure it's under that weight limit and that they can provide the services to all of the residents. Another big issue is recycling and a yard waste outlet. We want to make sure we know where the recycled goods are going and that the outlet can handle and will accept the town's volume. Also, sustainability is important. We want to ensure that the haulers we're using are composting the yard waste. There's specific DQ rules around this. I know you've seen the news stories about them all going into one truck, or they have experienced that. We just want to make sure we know where that end market is. Most go to, I think, the city of Charlotte there. MRF. And speaking with Union County, the location for them is important. They have a self-sustaining landfill, and obviously they get a price per ton if the trucks use their landfill. They hope to have more trucks using their landfills so they can provide, council has a group, hazardous waste recycling and electronics recycling and more programs for Union County residents, so that may or may not be a factor in our bid, but we will want to consider that. We hope to bid as many of these options as possible to provide you guys with enough to make the decision. It's probably a good idea to have a date where all the haulers can come in and ask questions. They all get the same question, or they all hear the questions and get the same answers. We do plan on bidding this with the village of Marvin with an option to go our own way if you don't want the same types of services. So I'll continue to work with their administrator on the RFP and with the town attorneys, and we'll get you a draft as soon as possible. So we're hoping to try to get something out by the end of February, beginning of March. I don't know if this is something you want to do, like a public survey on, like, once we get their responses or how you all want to handle that, but remember, we only have six months to make a decision.
I have one more thing I would like to see if we can add, is actually the level of service that the company would provide. Versus, I don't want staff to have to worry with this, or is it something that they're going to provide?
Customer service?
Customer service. When they call the phone number, are they calling the company or are they calling the town hall?
And that's what I've told Lisa, that practically, I think, that I told Lisa this earlier, based on my experience, they're calling town hall no matter what. So it doesn't make any, you know, even if we have a, generally, they will handle, the companies handle the customer service issues, but there is no avoiding, right, that the calls are coming to town, and it would be wise to consider a half-time employee to handle it. It's going to reduce that much work. So just FYI.
I don't think that's a bad idea, because, you know, the thing with it is, is that if there is some complaints and it's solely handled through the company, we may never know there's a complaint, and we're paying for it, so in some way, whether, however it happens, there should be a mechanism where we are aware of what the complaints are, so if they're not being handled properly, we can.
And in addition, I love that all of the contracts that I've done with, with solid waste companies, and we're dealing, I've dealt with at least three, four, you know, so we don't go with four, they all have limited damage provisions, and so they, which means if they are, if there's a spill, if they miss, if they continually miss pickup, if they're continually off time, there's a damage schedule that, that you just reduce your bill for the next month. So that the town does need to know. Yeah, when there's problems, and you're going to hear about it for sure. And so that was, just, again, it's just preparing, it's a great, great service for the public, but the town needs to be prepared that it is, it does take step time.
Is that something that we could, if we end up going in with Marvin on the contract, that we could share an employee, share those expenses then?
That's a great idea.
One central number to call in.
And it's probably not a full-time job, but it certainly, but it certainly, it can be, you know, if they miss Friday pickup, their phone's ringing Saturday morning, and somebody, so somebody wants their garbage picked up, so it's just, it's just prepared and be, have that in your head that there's, there's a, you know, how we.
Yeah.
Write the legal words.
It's gonna.
Practically, it will, but it'll really impact on staffing on this one.
And another thing, I think you mentioned was to make or break on a service of like getting someone a cart on time, if they, if there are cart breaks, they want one like the next day, so having a few extra around town hall or if we share services with Marvin, having a person that's able to, like a public works that person able to do it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right.
I'm not a 110-pound person, I guess.
Okay. Questions, comments? Are we, we good with everything else?
I'm good with it. I think too, that one, I'm sure one of the questions that's going to be coming up is, I mean, like most folks, I mean, we, we pay for our garbage service, some of them are going to be asking, well, what is it gonna, if I'm not paying them, what, what is this going to do to what I'm paying to the town or that? So I don't know how someone can get an estimate or some kind of ballpark number, because we all know that question's kind of, it's going to.
For sure, yeah. And I think the good news in that is, that's part of your, that's part of the tax.
But the nice thing about it is, and then, I know we discussed this at the alliance meeting when it, when Anne first presented, is, you know, the economy at scale, the more, the more people that are involved, the better rate we're going to get from, from the vendors, and, and in fact, a couple of the other members, even though they said they didn't want to do it right now, I think they were kind of, say, okay, well, let's see how this works out, and it may, you know, so I don't know what, if, if there's any mechanism that can be incorporated in that if other municipalities around us want to, at some point, jump in the game, you know, kind of like you do your annual thing of where you work about your insurance, that there's an open season, you know, where other people can sign up, if, if that can be part of it or not, but just.
Indian Trail does now, don't they?
Yeah, and they have their own garbage.
They have their own, they, yeah, does, does anybody else, does Stallings have garbage?
Wax Salt has their own.
Wax Salt.
Stallings did, Mineral Springs did, obviously Marvin.
So Indian, and Indian Trail just started, didn't they? About a couple of years.
They've had garbage service since I've been the town attorney over there.
Okay.
But then they switched, they switched service providers since 2017.
But does Wax Salt handle it themselves or do they contract that? Okay, because, yeah, Indian Trail did too, which is why our trust service went down after that.
That's right, it changed in 2017.
But I think one of the other important things to do, because I only got one email about it where a person was not happy about it. I think it's important for us to get out that, number one, we could get more services if we do it, you know, as a contract with the town, but more importantly, I think we need to get after, which is why I kind of hit this a couple of years ago, was the roads. I mean, we're, I was told by DOT that that's one of the major reasons that our roads are being broken up. So I think if we, the more information we can get out there as to why we're doing this, it might help if there's any people who are, you know, not for it, so maybe put a, put some type of message out like that. But I, over the years, I've seen people who were not for it, and I've seen plenty of people that were for it too, so it's kind of.
Well, and there are still people in the town that take their garbage to the dump. I mean, there, I mean, there's not a closed dump.
That's the problem, the problem is, is a lot of them have closed now, and it just makes it difficult, and, and when you look at, you know, you can't drive anywhere, the trash trucks are constantly.
Yes.
All through neighborhoods, and, and it's, there's just no one, it's, it's just.
Well, yeah, it's killing, killing roads.
It's a mess, yeah.
You're, you're right, I mean, I get about six a week in my neighborhood.
Well, we're lucky, some neighborhoods, like Jen Bromley had, they had only one trash company in theirs, no? They didn't have, they had three?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Because I thought certain neighborhoods, like African, I think African has a specific company that goes just in African. When I was trying to get garbage for my house, I was following the trucks through the neighborhood, so.
Residents were told which one to sign up with, but GBUSA, and then there's Cross Point, and then there was Trinity, that, like, there's, there's four or five that are garbage companies in there.
I thought there's.
And active is out there, there's a part.
All right, there, there's a lot, so there's, there's a lot of information that I think needs to be, you know, a lot of work that needs to be done before we can really say.
The more, the more we can tell people early on.
Absolutely.
And get feedback, the better off we are.
Yeah. All right. 12C, discussion and consideration of resolution for welcome signs. Lisa.
NC DOT Traffic Engineering and Safety System requires a resolution from any municipality for any welcome to sign or slogan sign. They also request a resolution from the county, even though it's a municipality. So in your packet is Resolution 2021-01 endorsing welcome to slogan sign.
Okay, are there any questions?
No.
None, we're going to get resolved.
By the time we get these things resolved, we're going to have to change it to 30.
That number is just an arbitrary number right now. Okay, I will look for a motion to approve the resolution endorsing welcome to slogan signs, R 2021-01.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 12C, discussion and consideration of resolution for Wesley Chapel against high-density rezonings of the donuts, donut holes. Lisa.
This is an R4 CZ zoning request by Epcun, for senior housing off of Billy Hallie Road. It is 115 lots and 43 acres, and the town of Wesley Chapel, Village of Wesley Chapel is asking for our support against this zoning, 2.67 units per acre.
If I could just interject here, folks, we got two resolutions on our agenda tonight that speak directly to what Anne and I have been working with the other members of the alliance on getting the county to give us this ETJ. This is a donut hole in their town that somebody wants to put this on county land. If, if you want, if somebody asks you, why should we be for this, or why do we need this? Show them that it's, it doesn't get any clearer than this, and I hope that, that folks that are listening, folks that are reading this, will get on that county webpage, that 2050 Union County Plan page, and make comments about this, because this is what we don't want, and this is what we're fighting to have a say about. And I'm for it, by the way, I'm for the resolution, by the way.
Thank you for that. I love, I love the passion. Okay, are there any questions or comments? Anybody else? No. Okay. I will look for a motion to approve the resolutions for Wesley Chapel against high-density rezoning of donut holes.
So moved.
All in favor? Okay. Is Kevin online?
He's not.
He's not?
I'm going to quick.
You're going to do it?
Yeah.
Okay, Lisa.
Thank you. You've all seen this at the last meeting, Kevin has been reviewing this section and reorganizing it. A lot of this text goes into an appendix, especially the more technical documents, including the original control ordinance requirements, formal requirements, and FEMA regulations. As far as timeline, we're currently doing the technical editing now that we, now that we have it organized, and we're getting the final charts and graphics in place. We plan on starting the official text amendment process in February with the planning board. We'll call for a public hearing in March, and if all goes well, you guys will be looking at this in April. I would like to take a second, though, to go back to section seven in light of the recent Roots Farm development being withdrawn. I've been asked and questioned over how this specific project was submitted and how it got as far as it did. I know you guys know this, but the town has what's called conditional zoning. Anytime, anyone can apply for this type of zoning. In fact, our new unified development ordinance is getting rid of most of the listed uses, and will be required, will require almost all projects to go through this conditional zoning in the future. It allows for unique ideas to be proposed that can't fit in a predetermined set of standards, or as Karen said today, it's an out-of-the-box idea. It allows for the town to look at specific uses on a specific site, look at the surrounding area and the uses, and decide whether that use meets the land use plan, and if it's a better use than what our ordinances would typically allow. It's a shame that we weren't able to have that discussion or even get to the public input part of that rezoning, even though we did have three public input meetings. This is the last section in time that you're seeing the reorganization part of this UDO. So if anyone is uncomfortable with moving forward with the conditional zoning, I'm sure Karen will agree and Kevin that we need to stop the UDO and discuss section seven. I'll make myself available at any time to discuss this with you all or for the public, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Correct. Questions?
Say that again, so, I mean, I heard you, I just want to make sure everybody in the room heard you. In the future, anyone can bring any unique idea, if they have some unique thing that they want to do with a different type of farm, they can bring it, and it can go through a conditional use again, and no one can say that it's not in our ordinances, because it will be in our ordinances, and it will be a unique conditional zoning, correct?
Per lot, per project?
Site plan specific.
Site plan specific.
Right, and it gives you guys a leverage, it's legislative process, so if you don't like it, you say no, versus something that's listed and then questioning whether it fits or meets the intent or, or whatever, it's an easy yes or no.
Okay. I don't have any questions or comments, I think it's pretty straightforward. If we are done with that, I will move on. All right. 12E, discussion of possible dates of the retreat. Y'all have some dates that you've started looking at? Y'all have some dates that you've started looking at?
We typically have been doing like a Friday afternoon, um, February, uh, we've got the fifth, 12th, 19th, or 26th all available. Um, I don't know if you wanna, have it at the Monroe Country Club again, I think that works out well.
I thought that was, I thought it was nice. I thought it was. I thought that was a great idea. I think it worked out. We had a.
What was it? How long were we there last time? Nine to one or nine to two?
We started like through the snow.
That's right, that's right. We got late. But we were there just until, we ate lunch.
Nine to two, I mean, but I, I mean, nine to two is not too long, is it?
I don't think it is. You know, we were pretty regimented with the stuff that we had. We didn't fill the agenda, and I think that was the key thing, is just, we, we, we were really intentional.
Less topics and discussing.
So is there any?
I know I would not be able to do the 19th.
Okay, so are you flexible the rest?
I'm pretty flexible the rest of the time.
Okay.
I will work any of them then.
So the eighth is the council meeting.
You don't wanna go back to retreat.
And you know what?
You're gonna be hard pressed to get in.
And that's a good, that's right.
My follow-up was very good, and you even admitted it, so.
I've been to six of them.
Yeah, but, but you've only been to a couple that, that, that have been, have been efficient.
You throw me.
Efficient. So we'll come up with a date outside of the 26th. 19th, 19th.
I'll see if they're available.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll go with, Karen, if you want to reach out to.
They really won't have that.
Wherever, what, what was it?
Immigrant Community Club, or.
If you'll reach out to Rolling Hills and look at.
Their availability.
Maybe the, let's shoot for like the 12th or the 26th. That way, that'll give them, and just see, but see what their availability is. Anything outside the 19th?
And Leslie can usually get us the deal.
And Leslie will get us the special, the special town deal.
Works for me, too.
All right. So we will hear back from you on that. All right, and we have, uh, 12F, the discussion and consideration of the resolution opposing the Howie Farm Senior Housing subdivision.
Same type of resolution at Glenhurst.
This is the Glenhurst. Oh, yeah, Glenhurst.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where did I flip the wrong page? I thought that. I guess I don't have a copy of it. It's the name one?
Yeah.
Um, all right. Consideration for the, for the Glenhurst. That's the one on Potter and Indian Trail, yes.
It's unincorporated Union County, it's zone our forty, their land use plan says low density, one to two dwelling units per acre. There's a hundred and sixteen lots proposed on forty acres, similar to the age restricted one in Wesley Chapel.
Yeah.
It's a resolution opposing the Indian Trail annexation and rezoning of this.
Questions?
I already said one.
I know, I know. Well, this is just, this is, we've been getting some emails, and Lisa's been reaching out, so we thought this was the firmer thing.
Have they, has Indian Trail said why they are deviating from their current land use density and allowing this one to be annexed and changing it?
Um, they have not, but they have been known to approve higher density projects. Um, but no, I have not. They were excited. I think they may have went from one sixteen down to one oh two, and they were excited that day.
They, they did travel.
And I did, I did drive through there, um, this past weekend, um, through the neighborhood that's, you know, the, the larger houses that they're gonna try to access.
Yeah.
And it looks like where they're going to be accessing is actually like, um, like really low line. There's a creek in there, there's a culvert, and so there's some other issues. So I don't know how that's gonna be affecting any floodplain issues or any runoff, or, you know, what kind of plans they have for that. If that's ever been taken into consideration for the neighboring houses.
Is that from the Cambridge Oaks side?
It's not Cambridge Oaks, it's the Potter's, Potter's Cove. So it's actually not a wedding, I don't think it's a Weddington neighborhood, that is they're connected to.
Okay.
But I think that may have some more issues than just of connecting it to the road, so.
Um, and like typically, after you guys approve a rezoning, I'm sure they do the same thing. That's when they do the construction plans, and if things have to be taken after reconsidered, um, it's usually during this construction plan, I guess. But I'll, I'll mention that for sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Susan.
I'm assuming that's why they put this up, where they put.
All right, thank you. Um, if there are no more questions or discussion, I will look for a motion to approve the resolution opposing the Glenhurst subdivision rezoning request.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Update from our planner, Lisa.
Thank you. We had a community meeting for Belmar subdivision. It's ten lots off of Old Milk Road. I believe the sketch plan will be approved administratively in the next two weeks, and then they'll start their preliminary flat construction plans, which will go to you all and planning board, um, probably in the next two to three months. I did wanna talk about Roots Farm again. Um, I think council and planning board have reached out and, um, provided some, uh, support. I've been called passionate. I've been told that this is bad planning. I've been questioned on how much I knew about the project, and how much you all knew about the project, and why it is, and how it got to where it is today. I've been working with the Roots Farm group for over a year and a half. I knew they wanted to do an inn, but we were debating whether to put it on Weddington side or the county side. I knew they wanted to do single family homes and lease them to fund the farm and to allow for more programming. And I also knew they wanted to do an artisan only farmer's market. These uses fit our current definition of agritourism and RCD. What the public didn't know is every time I went out there or to meet this group, it was to discuss programming for the site. And every time, they continued to question me on what Weddington residents wanted. A farm to table restaurant, a demonstration kitchen, cooking classes with a top chef from Charlotte, kids farm programming, a place to grab a drink and listen to music on a patio, a place for 4H groups, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts to meet, a place for HOAs to hold their meetings, demonstration gardening, educational programs, art programs, library, museum, things for kids to do in Weddington. This was an eighty million dollar cash debt-free investment with every intention to have the entire project open to the public to enjoy. It was six miles of hiking and biking trails and a way to get out and see Weddington preserved and the rural atmosphere preserved. It brought agriculture back to Weddington, as we are seeing this loss to residential development at a significant rate. I've been doing this for fifteen years and was skeptical like everyone else, but after meeting the team and hearing their vision and talking with the people that I met, I believed in the idea and I was passionate about it. I'm sad we weren't able to bring this forward to, and that it was painted in the light that it was. I appreciate those that have reached out and called and asked questions, and I appreciate everyone's ideas and their suggestions to make this work. I enjoy working with their team, and I hope we have an opportunity to work with them again.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And Lisa, I will say, um, your passion with your job is what makes you the phenomenal employee that you are. So don't let anybody shame you for being passionate about your job. Okay. Leslie?
I think you skipped code enforcement.
We didn't get, we didn't get code.
Code enforcement. I'm gonna turn to the code enforcement. We were, no, you're good, okay.
I'm good, thanks.
All right, I don't have any questions. Anybody got any questions? Okay. Leslie?
All right, you have the monthly financials in your statements. We are officially halfway through fiscal year. Everything is, seems to be going along pretty smoothly. Um, not anticipating anything coming up within the next six months to mess that up. It is surprisingly enough, time to start considering the budget for next year. It's going to be a fun one. We're gonna have the rebuttal on there. We're gonna have, um, figure out fire service, you know, with the long term or short term, I guess, at this point, plans for that are. So, um, by the retreat, there may or may not be a whole lot to see yet. I'm, we're probably gonna have to look at multiple tax rates, rate scenarios this year, so be thinking about what you guys want, and let me know, so.
Okay. Very good. Questions? All right. Transportation report. I just have something, um, real quick. Last September, CRTPO had a call for projects. We submitted for DA funds for the Potter Road and Forest Lawn project, and those results were, were, and the scores came out, I guess it was sometime in December. Um, although that project scored well, we were not selected due to limited funding. So, um, we'll continue to apply for grants as money becomes available. So that's, do you have anything to add, transportation? All right. That's it. Um, council comments?
Um, I guess I'm gonna weigh in, uh, a little bit on this Roots Farm thing. Um, I wanna thank everybody who came out and spoke and gave her comments. It is very important that you do so, and then continue to do that. Whenever you feel either for or against it, and voice your opinion. It is very important, at least for me as a council member, to know how the public feels. So I really appreciate all the comments tonight, uh, of people standing up and, uh, giving their feelings. But I, and I do wanna say this, and I do agree totally with, with the council, is that it is important that we maintain a level of professionalism and civility when we give our, our comments. I wanna hear what you have to say, but it's, it's very important that it's done in the correct manner. So, again, thank you very much for coming out and, and sharing your, your comments with us. It is very important. And thank you for coming out and attending the meeting, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Same thing that Mike said. Uh, thank everybody that came out tonight. Um, wish everybody a happy new year and a safe new year. So, but again, the Roots Farm is a very big disappointment, um, to the community. I don't know that it would have been approved, but just the way it got handled was very unfortunate for the town. And I wish those people the very best with their property. I know it's a beautiful property, and no matter what they decide to do, uh, I wish them the best. Okay?
Um, I'll just comment that if anybody, any resident has any questions, if they have a concern, if they have a comment, um, I'm always available to, to take those calls, um, take those emails. Uh, I appreciate the feedback. I mean, we're all in this to, you know, make Weddington better. So if you do have, you know, comments, um, feel free to reach out to me. But I appreciate you guys all being here today and, um, those comments that people that did speak today. So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Perryman?
Thank you. Um, I would like to take my time this evening, uh, to address the recent Roots Farm project, and specifically, uh, comments that were being made on social media. This was a project of a scope and size never before seen in Weddington. After the initial presentation to our planning board, I began to see questions and comments appearing on social media. I reached out to our residents, and I tried to answer these questions and concerns. However, much more than questions were being posted. After doing some research, I would like to share the following. If any resident believes that a member of this council or staff has committed a violation of our ethics code, here is what they need to do. Make a formal complaint to Town Hall. Make your complaint in writing. An email to Town Hall will meet this criteria. The complaint should include the evidence of this ethics violation, and once received and reviewed by our town attorney, the appropriate investigation will be conducted in public and for the record. Accusations have been made against this council of serious breaches of ethical conduct, none of which were made in any official manner, but simply circulated on social media. I have read where we allegedly hid or withheld information, that we were secretly influenced by the developer, that we agreed to approve this project ahead of the CZ process, and of using the COVID crisis to stifle resident input. These and other social media posts along the same vein are categorically untrue. I have served on both the planning board and now the town council for Weddington, and I have never seen this level of vitriol directed against the people who serve this town, and it needs to stop. I have no issue with people who disagree on proposals. There are legitimate questions that can and should be asked. However, making statements claiming shady deals and secret agendas is not productive in any way. I have the greatest respect for all the members of this council and our town staff. I know how hard you all work for the benefit of our residents. We don't always agree. We aren't supposed to. But we work together, we follow the rules, and we all want what is best for Weddington. For our residents who may have read or heard these comments about council or staff, the first question you need to ask the messenger is, have you made a formal complaint? If the answer is no, then ask, why not? Spreading rumors and unfounded accusations is at best poor judgment, and at worst, a deliberate attempt to create distrust and suspicion. It is a disservice to everyone who lives in Weddington. My challenge to those spreading this information is, if you are speaking truth on social media, then have the strength of your convictions and make the accusations full and for the record. Otherwise, don't make them at all.
All right.
Thank you.
I think I just have an amen and a happy new year to everyone. And we will.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to move into closed session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ooh, God, I hate.
You know, you know it's working.
Yeah, okay.